All right, thank you very much and welcome everyone to the October City Council Meeting. Are there any announcements? I know Eric, you wanted to mention something.
Yeah, I wanted to take a moment to commend all the teams that were involved with the IKEA Traffic Management and Topgolf. I've got the unique perspective of working in the office building just east of IKEA and along with a lot of residents, had a lot of colleagues that were very anxious for the last 12 months on how that would take place and everybody received high marks. So, kudos to everyone that was involved in that.
Yeah, I want to point out a couple people specifically, Jeff Hill, our Engineering Director, Eric Petto, Public Works Director, and Norm Tate from the Police Department. Those guys, Mark Elder from the Fire Department, they've been planning this thing for a year and a half now and it's not as though there wasn't a lot of demand and a lot of energy. We saw thousands of people particularly over the weekend, really got busy, but unbelievable the work our team did, very excited about the work they did.
And we all understand that it's still an ongoing process and from my perspective as well, also appreciate the businesses along that route being understanding and patient as the newcomers come online.
And my wife personally thanks you, Mayor, so she could go shopping.
She got in and out, there you go. We went to Portillo's on Friday night, my wife and little guy, and got right in and right out, so it worked.
Yeah. Any other announcements? Okay, no proclamations, but we do have a Service Award, Chief Thompson?
Good evening, Council. For the record, Mitch Thompson, Chief Police for Fisher's Police Department. I am very pleased to present to you tonight a 25-year service award. This one gives me a sense of fun with this guy because Dave's career has certainly made it fun around our Police Department. He's joined tonight by his better half Denise and Dave and Denise have four kids, six grandkids, very much a family man. A little history about Dave, he started with us in October of 1992, but before he came to our Police Department, he served about two years with Lapel Police Department and before that, he was in the US Marine Corps for four years as a Communications Officer. Like I said, Dave's had a very unique career with us. He started out in patrol like everybody else does, but then the majority of his 25 years has been spent in special investigations and Dave has had the unique ability in working with the Drug Task Force to conduct investigations such as murder-for-hire, prostitution. There is a unique weekend that used to exist at Deer Creek in which the Grateful Dead would come to town and fish and Dave and his crew were responsible for 104 arrests in three days, which is phenomenal. He went around bragging around the Police Department about his stats for that. But most notable within our agency, we have an Internet Crimes Task Force and Dave was a founding member of that. I remember when he came in and talked to Administration, he and Dan Paulson, and wanted to pitch to us as to the need to create an Internet Crimes Task Force within Hamilton County. And being that he had come from the Drug Task Force, he also saw that this is something that should be a countywide task force, not unique to the Fisher's Police Department. And that unit stands today, has progressed. Dave is still in that unit. He serves as a Sergeant in the Computer Forensics Examination. And you know, the words that come to mind to me, one is Dave is extremely humble, he's incredibly funny, very witty guy, always keeps us on our feet. So, it's a great pleasure tonight that I get to present the 25-year award. It says, "In recognition and appreciation for your dedication and loyal service, the City of Fisher's presents this certificate to Dave Kim for 25 years of service." Thank you, Dave. Thank you.
If I can make just a quick comment about the Internet Crimes Group. They often don't get a lot of notoriety for the work that they do, but it's very, very difficult work and most of their cases nowadays end up in federal court. And if you heard some of the stories of the work they accomplished, not here, just in Fisher's, but around the state, around the country and internationally, and the number of kids that they've taken out of very, very horrible situations, the work and the career of Dave Kim will stand the test of time and really appreciate what they do in that group. That work is extraordinarily taxing on an individual and the fact that Dave's been doing it as long as he has is really extraordinary.
Right. We echo that. Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Mr. Kim. And moving ahead, the consent agenda. Did anybody have any changes or was there a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Todd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving to number seven, "Request to approve resolution to appropriate additional funding for the signal at 126th and Hoosier Road." Ms. Bradford?
Lisa Bradford, Controller. What you guys see before you is an additional appropriation for the light at 126th and Hoosier Road. This was an expenditure that was not originally part of our 2017 budget. It's arisen, excuse me, due to a need and so we present it for you. No additional impact on the motor vehicle highway fund as we have adequate reserve balance.
Any questions? Was there a motion?
Yeah, I think we have to have a public hearing.
I apologize. You're all good. A little bit too quick. Okay, at this point, I'll open it up for a public hearing. All those wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion?
Certainly. I want to thank Lisa and her team for putting this together for us and also willingness of the council to move forward on this. This will address a significant intersection. It's caused a lot of issues over the years and it is rewarded. So, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 101617C.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Pete. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The bid opening's Thursday and then we still hope to have it done before the end of the year.
Your vote.
Yep, yep.
Sorry, Brad, I didn't see any questions. Okay. Moving on to 101617D. Again, Ms. Bradford?
This is the next step in the approval process regarding the issuance of bonds for the amphitheater. It also approves the actual physical issuance of the bonds going forward and so just with the new law, this is our third time, I believe, before you with this.
And again, just like last meeting, this requires an additional public hearing.
Okay. So, for this matter, we'll open it up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion?
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion by John and seconded by Pete to suspend the rules. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Eric. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to 101617E. Mr. Dickinson?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. For the record, Brandon Dickinson, Director of Economic Development. The item before you today is an amendment to the Central Indiana Orthopedics Economic Development Agreement. If you recall, in the economic development agreement, it had situated Central Indiana Orthopedics parcel. Basically, they bought 36 acres of land and they were going to split it up kind of four-square with four different large parcels. In that agreement, they had signified specifically that they would develop in the southwest parcel and they now are looking for some flexibility to that. I believe now they're looking at maybe potentially developing their site in the northeast of those four parcels. But based on how strictly written the EDA was, even though it's a fairly minor thing, we bring it before you today to grant, to get your approval to allow them to develop on any of the four sites. By them developing on any of those other sites, it doesn't diminish their requirements in the EDA in any way, shape, or form and we actually believe that if they're allowed to develop on one of the other three parcels, it may actually come as a net benefit to the city by allowing additional economic development that would not otherwise take place. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
If they want the northeast, will all the infrastructure, still install their black vehicle, they were just going to do the infrastructure needed for the southwest part. Now that it's going northeast, will they go ahead and do the infrastructure to accommodate the southwest part?
Yeah, they'll still be required to do everything in Phase One. If you remember, it's built out into three different phases for the infrastructure. So, they'll still have to put a road through there and everything to be able to access that site as well as the southwest corner as well. So, again, their responsibilities won't be curtailed in any way by them developing on a different site first. That's a good question. Thank you.
Motion approved.
Motion by Pete, is there a second? Seconded by Todd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, ordinances 091817B. This is a salary ordinance and I'd like to offer an amendment, if I may. We should be enough there, including Jenny.
What I'm offering quite simply is exactly the same with the following changes. The mayor would stay the same, but 5% increase, Clerk's Office 5% increase, council 3% cost of living increase, and the judge 3% cost of living increase.
Is that a motion? Discussion? Do you like to make a motion?
Do you make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, and I'll second this one.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And one against? Thank you. So, now with that change, Cece, please continue.
All right. Thank you. Members of the council, for the record, Cece Conover, Human Resources Director. I'm asking that we have approval for the 2018 salary ordinance as the amendment was just passed and approved.
And you just needed to vote it on it based on second reading. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Some vote.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Eric. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Motion approved.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Todd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Thank you very much. So, move to 091817A, which is the budget.
Lisa Bradford, City Controller. So, this is the second and third reading in the budget adoption. The budget is materially and substantially the same as we presented last month. No, no changes. The only change we will make is when we submit, we will shift some categories around based on the salary recommendations that were just done, but the total overall budget amount will not change. Any questions?
Can we suspend the rule on this one?
Can.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, public hearing was held last meeting, so you can hold it.
You can do it. So, I'll make a motion to suspend the rule.
I'll second.
Motion by Pete, seconded by John. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Eric. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I could just maybe make a comment or two about the budget. I want to thank Lisa and her team for working very hard. We had to do a little exploration. We thought we were going to get some additional COAT come our way, but we did not. But even without that, we're still doing things in a very conservative fashion and be able to handle our budget and handle our expenditures and not only take care of things without what we thought was coming our way, but do it also in a very, very efficient fashion. So, thank you, Lisa and your team. Thank you, the mayor, for all their work here on that budget. It's a great job. Thank you. Thank you very much, John.
Moving on, 101617A. Mr. Bagato?
Good evening. Tony Bagato, Director of Planning and Zoning. The item before you is an annexation. There's an aerial map. The property we're talking about is 21 acres highlighted here in yellow. It's just north of 104th Street, off Cynthia Road and just east of Florida Road. This is a property that is currently, has one home on it and it's very wooded on the west side of the property and it's, they're looking at coming in under the straight zone, which is R2, to develop the property. Dreams Dries Homes is the builder we've been working with, so this is the plan that we've been working with for the prefile. Again, they are coming in for straight zone, so they will not seek a PUD, but as part of our annexation strategy for the city whenever possible, as part of new development, we're getting annexations, ahead of annexations before they develop. So, this is a request just for annexation, the public hearing, first and second reading. A primary plat will go before the Planning Commission, so the three council members on the Plan Commission will get to see this at the primary plat level. And this exhibits just to show you tonight what's moving forward for construction.
How do you go?
I just don't want to get poked.
Is that flood plain there?
I don't believe it's flood plain there. It's just very wooded. I don't think that portion of this property is flood plain though.
Oh, yeah, I got that one. Anything else? Any other questions?
As I recall, there's also a bit of topography.
Correct.
It's actually a little close by me, so it becomes a little more problematic.
Correct. And they're going to remain open space and keep our open space standards, our new ones adopted, and comply with those standards.
Okay. And then, Tony, what you're requesting is public hearing and then I should do first and second reading?
Correct.
Okay. I'll open it up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any other council comments?
Have first and second reading, I guess, is what we're at.
Is that just it? Just the formal statement? Okay. Okay. So, we'll move on to 101617B. Request to approve a text amendment to the Saxony PUD. Tony?
Good evening. Once again, this item before you is for first reading, so it's only for introduction and comment and we'll move on to Plan Commission for public hearing and then back to council. As you're familiar with, the sports complex is moving forward in the Saxony Plan Unit Development. After working with them and looking at the PUD further, there was amendments done in 2014 to address the sports complex in Area A, which is on the west side of Oleo Road. And in reviewing the Area B that they're planning now, there's certain limitations that don't allow the sports complex without some modifications. So, those modifications, again, is to allow it in Area B on the east side of Oleo Road. Basically, just looking at retail density, so increasing the amount of retail square footage is what the complex would accommodate, reducing some of the setbacks, looking at the height limit and some of the parking requirements as well as the signage. So, this is the concept plan we've been given for the sports complex. I will point out the perimeter retail lots are actually already allowed in the existing PUD, so the accommodation is for the square footage of the sports complex, which was not accommodated in this parcel. Here's some preliminary sketches of the architecture. They're showing some signage exceptions, but they're looking at putting some banners and some public art potentially on the building. Again, this will go through Plan Commission, the public hearing, as well as the PUD Committee for Architecture and then back to the City Council, you know, for review for second and third reading. So, again, we're here tonight just for first reading, introduction. Any questions or comments?
Any questions? Comments?
Have first reading.
Most, we're having first reading. Thank you very much. So, we'll move on to 101617C. Request to approve a rezone of 19.25 acres, Lake Meadows Assisted Living. Mr. Hillary, is it?
Yes, sir. Good evening and for the record, my name is Ross Hillary, Planner 2 with the City of Fisher's. With you tonight is a petition for rezone of the Lake Meadows PUD. It is currently located north of East 126th Street, south of I-69, and also southeast of Billerica Park. It is currently zoned R2 and is within the I-69 overlay. Overview of tonight's introduction and first reading, it's a 19-acre parcel. It will have connectivity to Whisper Woods subdivision and you'll see that in the next slide. The two different uses will be assisted living as well as two family dwelling units and will also comply with our new open space requirements and amenities for both of those two users. We'll see here that assisted living facility is located on the left and those two family unit houses are on the right with that connection to the right. Again, this is the first, here is an architecture rendering of that assisted living facility that was located on the left there. Right now, in the timeline, this is the first reading. It will go to PUD review for architecture, then the public hearing, and we'll revisit City Council again in December. And tonight, we just asked for any, for the first reading and any questions. The petitioner is here if there is any additional questions from him.
Okay. Thank you very much. One thing I think is, there's a wall along there. NDOT has that wall in that direction, I think.
The petitioner can speak about that, but I believe it's due to the fact that it was just trees at the time, that there was not a wall installed.
That's fine. I was just thinking it was there. Yep. Mr. Harden, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President. Members of the City Council, for the record, my name is Steve Harden. I'm a partner in the law firm of Fager Baker Daniels and I'm pleased to be here representing two local Fisher's businesses tonight. CNH Capital, Dan Hubbard, and AHEPA, and they're represented by Todd Jensen, who are here collaborating on this project that's before you. Ross did a great job of giving an overview. The wall is not yet along this property. It goes along the, I believe it stops at the Whispering Woods neighborhood. So, we're really excited about this development. If anyone who lives out in this area, you drive by there, I drive between my home and church, you know, every weekend at least, and you wonder what's ever going to happen where you're up against 126th Street and I-69. And so, it was really pleasing to me to meet Dan Hubbard and Todd Jensen and see what their plan is. So, as Ross mentioned, and staff report in our packet shows you that this is, the main thrust of the development is the assisted living component. And then, the additional land around the pond is planned for the continuation of the pair of patio homes that Adams and Marshall began years ago. Lake Meadows, you might not have done your Billerica research, but our sister city, Billerica, has a lake in the middle of their town called Lake Meadows. And so, Dan Hubbard decided that would be the name for this since we're right across the street from Billerica Park. So, that was kind of a nice touch there. The plan would be to begin construction and development next spring. We have submitted the PUD ordinance to the staff, working through some odd, little handful of odd issues because of the rights of way and the setbacks, so we've just spelled them out directly based on where we're adjacent to I-69 and 126th Street. We have a, across the street from us, we have about three large track, large-sized homes, including our longtime president of the Plan Commission, Ward Harling, lives across the street, so we've met with him already, as well as Councilman Dreamer, whose district this is in, in addition to the staff, to talk about this and the administration about the project. And we believe we're on solid ground and are responsive to what people are hoping to see or certainly not presenting something they didn't want to see. So, we're open to any questions you have. Otherwise, we respectfully look forward to going to the Plan Commission, going from there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Yeah, Brad?
Steve, since it'll be a stoplight there, that should be a help in selling that.
Thanks, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Have first reading.
Okay. Motion have first reading. Thank you. So, move to 071717D. Request to approve an amendment for Turnberry and Burton Falls, second and third reading.
Good evening. For the record, Taylor Navarre, Planner with the Planning and Zoning Department. The item before you tonight is a request to hold second and third reading for the Turnberry PUD text amendment. Turnberry, single-family residential development, that's part of the overall Burton Falls PUD ordinance and is located north of East 126th Street and west of Atlantic Road. Turnberry is an active community right now with approximately 137 total lots with roughly 20 of those being developed currently or have been developed. The text amendment, it kind of has two portions of it. The first being a request to reduce the minimum living square footage. For one-story homes, the reduction would be about 200 square feet and for two-story homes, it'd be 300 square foot reduction. Second portion is to allow front-loading three-car garages, which are currently prohibited in the community. As part of the amendment, it would allow only front-loading garages for three-car garages with certain commitments on that, such as a minimum two-foot offset for the third car bay, as well as kind of limiting the number of houses that could feature front-loading three-car garages to a maximum of 50% of the homes in the community, as well as limiting them to, or prohibiting them from being located on two consecutive lots. The petitioner had the request of staff in the Plan Commission, presented all of the new elevations and models that would be introduced to the Turnberry community as part of this amendment. They presented those to the PUD Committee earlier this month. All of the elevations that were presented were approved with a variety of garage options for all of the homes. Before you, there are a couple of examples of other Ryan Homes, houses that feature similar garages in the Silverton community here in Fisher's. Present these because some of the new models that they're introducing as part of this amendment are brand-new and would be brand-new to this community as well. And so, we don't have most updated renderings for those. But again, the plans were all presented and approved at PUD Committee. So, with that, staff is supportive of the request and would recommend holdings a combined second and third reading and approving the text amendment. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and the petitioner here as well. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Navarre. Did the petitioner want to make any comments or?
Hello, members of the council. My name's Adam Mears. I'm with Gratisson Land Development. Taylor did a great job of introducing what we're doing here. Since we originally filed this and went through first reading, we've met with Mr. Dreamer in one neighborhood meeting out at his development, also had a neighborhood meeting, really got no negative feedback at all. Everybody was supportive. And again, as Taylor said, went through PUD Committee with all the plans. Those were all approved. So, we think this is going to help give a better push to the neighborhood and looking forward to building a lot more homes out there. So, be happy to answer any questions on behalf of Gratisson, if you have any.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Brad, any?
As you said, the developer in Ryan Homes, we advertised a public meeting. We held in the chateau, had quite a few people that had concerns whenever you want to lower something. And the developer and Ryan did an excellent job answering the questions and quelling their fears. And when they got done, the few that had sent emails in protesting, sent a follow-up email saying, "I've changed my mind and withdraw my protest." So, yeah, Burton Falls is comfortable with it. Thank you for asking. Appreciate it.
Any other comments or a motion?
Suspend the rule.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Todd. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Affirmative.
Motion by Todd, seconded by Pete. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to 101617D. Request to approve a text amendment to the zoning map for the Geist Greenway. Mr. Bagato?
Yes, good evening. Tony Bagato, once again. I'm trying to make these quick. I know there's a Colts game on tonight. This one is one of two overlay zones you'll see back-to-back. The first one is Geist Greenway. The subject area is highlighted kind of in that oval red circle area. This is continued implementation of our comprehensive plan in Fisher's 2040. There was specific requests and, you know, policies and goals for creating a greenway along the Geist area, specifically around this Duke easement trail. And so, we're taking opportunities for land that is not yet developed. And so, we're taking opportunities for land that is not yet developed to build connectivity between the trailheads out there at, into Flatford Creek and into our new neighborhoods along Geist Greenway and into the Duke easement and B Camp Trail, as well as any other future development through existing neighbor, or new neighborhoods, sorry. And so, the parcels highlighted here in the green are the new, is where the overlay will be placed. Again, it's only south right now of Geist and along this area because it's undeveloped and we can incorporate a lot of trail connectivity here. So, I think this is again, just bolstering what we've already done with our open space standards and, and implementing our Fishers 2040 plan. It'll go through a rezone, public hearing, so these property owners will be notified and then back to city council. And this again, for introduction for first reading. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions or comments? First reading. We've had first reading. Thank you very much. Moving on to 101617E, request to approve a text amendment to the commercial use limited overlay district. Mr. Bagato?
So, the second overlay zone is one that's related to commercial standards that are allowed currently. And again, I would say this is again, continuing implementing our Fishers 2040 plan. There was goals and policies talking about evaluating our UDO and evaluating some of the uses in these land use designations. One of the things, working in the UDO, is our C3 zone is very broad in allowing pretty much anything and everything on a retail front. And so, there are certain uses we want to make sure that we're studying as we continue to develop our new UDO. But in the interim, we have a turnover of some large box properties from Marsh as well as Kroger at Allisonville Road. So, we're looking at what we're creating, what's called a commercial use overlay district on the specific parcels that the grocery stores are located. And what it's going to limit it to is just basically, anything that's larger than 5,000 square feet would have to be a grocery user. While we continue to work through implementing our new UDO and studying all our land uses, this gives us the opportunity to work with those property owners for any redevelopment there until we update our UDO. And with that, there'll be a public hearing and again, back to council. So, this is again, for introduction, first reading. If you have any questions.
Any questions or comments?
I'd make a comment. This is one that I particularly will try and play an active role in. I have some concern over this and I want to make sure that it's, it's drafted in the right way. My concern is that, you know, we're, we're affecting property ownership rights that exist and, you know, I just want to make sure that it's, it's done as well as we can. I understand some of the concerns that are out there and I want to make sure that we certainly meet those, but I also want to be respectful of, of, you know, ownership rights. So, again, I, I look forward to the continued review and work there with both PED and planning commission.
So, what Rich just said is we're going to have a fun planning commission meeting next time because I also appreciate what you guys are trying to do and I'm actually supportive of it because we get another bite at the apple the same way we did on the Sunbeam properties, right? We're not saying no, but we're not saying yes, right? What we're doing is we're, we're making sure that we get them back in front of us before we approve any. For me, I think that's a, a really good strategy in order to protect those centers that, that may be able to go into something very quickly to have us not see them again. So, from my standpoint, it's, it's really the mechanism that we're using to make sure they come back in front of us, Rich. And I don't necessarily want to take property rights again, away from an owner, but I want to make sure that we're certainly doing everything we can to protect it. So, I'm looking forward to a spirited debate at, at the next planning commission meeting, which is when, so we can have everybody in the audience come down and watch Rich and I battle back. I'm kidding.
I think we just got a preview of it.
Yeah. With, if there's no other comments, I'll, I'll have first reading unless David wants to chime in.
Brad, you officiate, okay?
Yeah, first reading and I, I agree with actually both of you guys. I guess that's why I'm a Libra, but I think, I think it's important to find that right balance because in the past, in my past life, when I was an engineer on projects, sometimes we would come to developers with codes and requirements and sometimes it made their projects, the redevelopment opportunities not happen. So, I agree with that, but at the same time, we want to keep these, these areas from, I'll call it downshifting into something that, that isn't the direction we want to go as a community. So, I think we can find the right balance. So, I appreciate both you guys pushing that and you guys are on the planning commission. So, it's perfect. So, thank you very much. Moving on to 101617F, request to do a text amendment to the PED process.
Yeah, so again, another first reading for comment, introduction. These are changes to our UDO, continuing implementing other portions of Fishers 2040 plan. That sounded like a broken record tonight or a scratch CD. So, this is about three major changes. One will be obviously allowing chickens at schools outright, so they don't have to come to council every time. The other one is changing our PED process. This is something we've been experimenting with, new construction, new PEDs I should say, coming for the city council. They go to PED committee prior to, which gives the PED committee a chance to actually look at the architecture before it's approved. The process today has PED committee reviewing plans after the architecture's already, the standard's been set and not seeing any plans and pretty much just make sure they comply with the written standards, which is a lot harder to enforce when you see that in some of the old PEDs. So, our new process going forward will be after planning commission looks at it, it goes PED process and then city council. And then, the last one was related to cemeteries and residential zones. Again, just like the C3, right now cemetery is allowed in every single residential zone and that's something that we don't think should be allowed in every residential zone, the remainder of the city, all the vacant lands residential. So, we want to make sure we study that and look at putting them, we update the UDO that they're in certain zones, maybe some residential, but not all of them outright. So, again, we want to remove them for today and then look at reevaluating that in our, in the rest of our update. Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments?
Not for free.
We've had first reading. Moving on to 082117C, request to rezonate 1.96 acres to R2. Mr. Hillary?
Good evening, again for the record, my name is Ross Hillary, planner with the city of Fishers here. What we have tonight is second reading of the Stations PED. It is located on East 116th Street, next to the Yard PED in Delaware Commons. It's currently zoned R2. Tonight, they are asking for PED. Some examples that have come up during the process with planning commission, things that are prohibited on the use is very similar to the yard. These include fuel stations, nail salons, tobacco shops, and then packaged goods stores. One thing that Steve Harden will do a great job of in a second, when he comes up here is talk about the architecture. The planning commission is very supportive, as well as the planning department, of the different materials we're using here. These are two different elevations. You'll see in the middle there, in the middle there, some pedestrian activity centers. Also supportive from the department is the street wall that's going to be created on 116, parking set in the rear, and then the access is going to be off 116. That is a ride-in, ride-out, as well as a ride-in, ride-out on Lynn Drive. This is the last step right here for this PED, the second reading. And as a staffer, very supportive of the changes that have come through here. Steve and his team have been great to work with. I may ask you tonight if you have any comments, but please suspend the rules and approve the, approve this. If you have any questions, I'm here as well as Steve Harden.
Great, thank you very much. Petitioner would like to make a few comments?
Good evening, again, Mr. President. Members of the city council, for the record, my name is Steve Harden. I'm a partner in the law firm of Fager Baker Daniels and pleased to be here this evening representing KLC Realty LLC. Before you, Mr. Charles Key is here, over here in the corner. And we're very pleased to be here this evening. And as Ross mentioned, this has gone through the, the normal process. We had a unanimous favorable recommendation from the PED committee and from the planning commission. There was no remonstrance, staff is supportive. And so, we would ask for your indulgence for a combined second and third reading tonight if you are so inclined. One of the things probably is a highlight for some of the city council members who weren't on the planning commission, at the beginning of this process, probably before it even came to you guys for first reading, there were some initial attempts at the architecture and the site plan. And we met with Tony Bagato and the public never, never sees all the, what happens behind the scenes. They think projects are submitted and you guys approve them at the first moment. But I will tell you that this was a project that really your staff has done a great job of giving guidance and not just saying, "Well, change this or change that," but giving really guidance going up our sleeves and working with the developer and the architects, current architecture, Lindsey Garrison and Sean Curran did a great job with the architecture that you saw up there on the screen just a few minutes ago. And one of, I think, the comments that we heard multiple times is we, before this project and during this was some of the comments about, "Let's not have another red brick and tan ethos type of development." And this certainly is not bad. And so, this is really setting the bar up high. We're really excited about the project and so, we haven't answered any questions, but I think we, in the spirit of the long agenda, would just ask if you guys have any questions. If not, we respectfully request your approval tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Motion suspend the rule.
Second.
Motion suspend by Pete, seconded by John. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Todd. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. So, moving on to 101617H, request to approve an amendment to chapters 36, 70, and 72 of the code.
Good evening, council, Lindsey Bennett, Assistant City Attorney. I'm here tonight on a parking ordinance amendment. Currently, the city can regulate parking on public streets, of course, but in looking forward with the nickel plate district, we decided we need to also consider lots and garages. There's an Indiana Court of Appeals case out there that says if you're going to regulate parking lots and garages, you need to have that language specifically included in your ordinance. So, that's what our amendment does, is just specifically include that language for lots and garages. The other thing it does is make a change to the fine structure. Currently, it's an escalating fine structure for your first, second, and third violation. What we're proposing is just one fine that doubles within, doubles after 30 days if it's not paid. So, the general parking fine that's proposed is $20, doubles to $40 after 30 days and the handicap, fire lane, and loading zones would be $50, which is what they currently are. And they would just double after 30 days to $100 if they're not paid. I'm also asking council to suspend the rules tonight and approve this amendment on first reading. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Good. And that's all you need, is just a motion on first reading to approve? No public hearing or?
Yeah, no public hearing.
That's what I mean. Okay.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules. No comments?
Motion by Pete, seconded by Eric. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Eric. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to 101617G, request to approve an ordinance authorizing the issuance of bonds.
Council President George, I will take this. Our controller is feeling a bit under the weather and had to take off early. This is a bond issuance in anticipation of a renovation of our, or actually in addition to our public works garage, as we've talked about during the budget process. During the summertime, we have about 140 guys working down there and we have two stalls for them from a bathroom perspective. And you can equate the same to just the general need for additional storage and workspace for our inventory control division of our public works department. This is a general obligation bond that will be issued this upcoming year and paid off in the same year, so it's just a one-year bond. And all of the tax implications that would come with issuing this $1 million worth of bond indebtedness is anticipated or contemplated in the overall tax rate discussion that we had at the finance committee and ultimately approved at the budget. So, I'm asking for your approval tonight.
Good. Any questions or comments?
Only question I have is Chris, am I a jeopardying voting on this motion?
Let me think about that.
I would, yeah. I would vote to, you can vote on the suspending the rules, but don't vote on the substance of the comment.
Because it's already been authorized, right? So, you still want me to abstain?
Yeah, I'd be great. Thank you.
And is this a suspension of rules it doesn't say?
This is, yes, please.
Okay. Is there a motion to suspend the rules and vote tonight? Motion by Pete, seconded by Todd. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion.
Motion by Todd, seconded by Cecilia. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Two abstentions. Moving on to 101617J, request to approve the Yard PED text amendment. Mr. Bagato?
Good evening, once again, last time for me. This is a text amendment to the Yard PED. Over the summer, there was actually an amendment to the EDA to clarify, several things with the part that I'm most familiar with, where there was some clarification of some of the uses in the PED that was done in the EDA. So, we want to make sure that these are consistent in the PED language. The Yard, which was next to the Stations PED you just approved tonight, had a list of prohibited uses. One of the uses that were prohibited is a nail salon, so it's prohibited outright as a standalone building. We want to clarify that they actually are allowed as part of like a day spa or a high-end treatment center as an accessory use, but not a, again, still prohibited as a standalone. Same thing goes with massage. We would prohibit a standalone massage, but we want to clarify that massage is part of a day spa or some other kind of high-end use boutique aspect would be incorporated into that business. Some clarification about what alternative financial facilities are not allowed, which are like bail bonds and those kind of facilities are prohibited, but some higher-end services could be allowed. And this is all, was redlined in your PED packet, so I'm just trying to highlight the key points. We did prohibit tobacco shops, but we want to make sure we allow cigar lounges, again, some high-end amenities or that could be part of the Yard development. So, that's going to be prohibited or allowed, even though tobacco shops will still remain prohibited. And then, there was one change for development standard. There's, they're looking at a hotel on the south end of the site and the height right now is listed at 65 feet. Just to be safe, they want to make sure, they want to move to 75 feet to be compliant for any plans that come in for the hotel. Staff doesn't see any issues with that additional height. And that is the, the request for the PED text amendment. I'm available to answer any questions, as well as Steve Harden is here, that can maybe answer any other questions you may have.
Good. Thank you. Would the petitioner like to make a few comments?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the city council, Steve Harden for the petitioner Thompson Thrift. And we're real excited about the Yard. The only addition I would make to Tony's, it's probably was hard to see in the PED ordinance, there is another development standard change. It's under the land escaping parking lot area. This is back on, let's see here, page five of the PED ordinance. There's a strike-through. There was a typo originally where it had two, the word "two" was spelled out, T-W-O, and then in parentheses, there was the numeral 10, so we cleaned that up to put the actual word 10 there. And then, the, the, there's a rule in the UDO for parking lots need to be at least 20 feet from the right-of-way, so they can encroach into the setback, they need to be 20 feet. And we've got few areas that dip into that. The city, if you recall, acquired most of all the properties along the perimeter, along 116th Street and IKEA Way, and they were much more deeper, much, much deeper than was needed for the typical right-of-way. There will still be anywhere from 19 and a half feet of green space between where the sidewalk pass will be and the parking lot and other areas up to 28 feet. So, you'll just see, we've modified that to comply with the one part of the site that dips into the, closer to the property line to nine feet, but there in fact will be the same substantive green space as you would normally expect. So, besides that, Tony was right, this is mainly to try to be able to be clear and match up the economic development agreement with the PED ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Steve, could you hit the up arrow? Because I just want to clarify something that you just said. I think, I understand, I just want to make sure. What I've always liked here, not for this project, but more as things develop into Sunbeam, at the bottom right, it's very small, but it's still some sort of a buffer.
Yes, sir. That 50-foot area is there.
Yep. And the main, because when I hear you talk about, but I just want to make sure nothing is changing there from what I see. And then, it's more so, just as we've talked before, as things happen on the Sunbeam property, there are some trees, some not, but you've got the condos. And then, you go down, you've got almost six or seven subdivisions, including along 106th Street, that it's fairly open. We've got the forum where Eric works, but as that develops, I think it's important to kind of use this as a, a beginning point, that as anything develops there, if we can create some sort of buffer. And if there are trees there, that's great. If not, then we can plant those. So, at the end of the day, as things happen, all those existing subdivisions will have some sort of tree buffer. I know it's not this case. I just, I always look at that as kind of like the beginning, and if that could continue through, that's something I'll ask for future developments, and that's just why I wanted to bring it up now and make sure it wasn't there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And we've had first reading. And before we go to the next one, I didn't want to put her on the spot, but I see our newest state senator. I just wanted to introduce her and welcome her to our meeting, Victoria Sparts. I know that she just joined the Senate for Senator Kenley Spot, and I've known her for a number of years, and she'll do a great job on our behalf, but I just wanted to thank you for coming and recognize you.
And moving on to 071717E, request to approve a rezone for approximately 86 acres from R2 to a PUD, the Miller Ciati PUD. Mr. Stotts.
For the record, my name is Kevin Stotts. I'm the Assistant Director for the Planning and Zoning Department. As you stated, this is a, the Miller Ciati rezone request, which is located roughly on 113th Street and Florida Road, as outlined there in red. Those are the subject parcels. It is to the east of the Gun Club. We also have a power station to the west of the site, and then the development kind of straddles. Here you are, the concept plan of 113th and Florida Road. So, the proposed rezone would change the properties which are currently zoned R2 residential to a PUD zoning district, which will be known as Geist Manor moving forward. The proposed PUD ordinance incorporates this concept plan and site plan for the development, which clearly shows a single-family subdivision proposed on the north side of 113th Street, and then approximately 48 acres, which will be conveyed to the city for the use of a public park on the south side of 113th Street, and this will be done through a park impact fee agreement. Just to highlight a couple of standards in the PUD ordinance, which were outlined in detail in the staff report, I would mention that the base zoning for the subdivision on the north side will be that similar to the R3 zoning district in our unified development ordinance. They will have 47 lots in the subdivision. They have clarified in the PUD ordinance that there will be a stub street provided to the north for future development. However, there will not be to the east, as that buffer of woods and trees will be preserved in a tree preservation area. We've had the fire department take a look at the streets and cul-de-sac links. They are supportive of the design that you see here, as well as our engineering department. Those cul-de-sacs allow for adequate turnaround for fire trucks and emergency services. We've also had a few architectural standards enhanced for those lots that are on the perimeter and shown with black dots there. So, the petitioner has suggested that those lots will have a rear facade architectural features added to those, such as a three-foot wainscote around all four sides and at least one rear facade projection, so a screened-in porch or a covered patio or porch, something similar to a protection in that manner. I would say, as I previously mentioned, the 48 acres located on the south side of 113th Street will provide a key piece of the puzzle to the Geist Greenway Trail, which Tony had mentioned in a previous item before you this evening. The intent would be for the Greece, Geist Greenway Trail to connect the Fall Creek Natural Area there with Geist Park to the west of Florida Road, and the 48 acres dedicated to the city here will allow, to help that connection. The item did go before the PUD committee. They reviewed the architecture being proposed. These will be Fisher Homes product. They, at that meeting, requested a couple of changes. They wanted us to clarify and add additional architectural feature exhibits to the PUD ordinance, so that it is clear what we mean and what the expectations will be for, you know, garage doors with windows or a large feature window or dentsel blocks. All these architectural features will have an exhibit, so that it's clear what staff should be looking for as each of the homes come in. They also requested that any ranch home, which is less than 2,400 square feet, be limited to 20% of the development, so that's roughly nine lots, and that those ranch homes should not be located on the perimeter lots of the subdivision. So, the petitioner agreed to those changes, and the Planning Commission also agreed to that, and they have been incorporated into this PUD ordinance. I will state that we had a couple of comments made at the Planning Commission, public hearing portion of the meeting. We had a few residents that wanted to discuss the entrance to the 47-lot subdivision to the north. We had one resident that desired for it to be pushed to the north a few lots, and then another one that followed that said, well, if it was going to be changed, could it be changed to the south? Ultimately, we had our engineering department take another look at this, and they are comfortable with the planned location of the entrance, because it gives a safe distance, not only for the planned roundabout on Florida and 113th Street, but also for kind of a snake in the road as you work further along Florida Road to the north. So, conceptually, the entrance works where it is today, and they would like to keep it located on the concept plan as shown, but we will take a closer look at it as we work through the technical advisory committee to make sure it's lined up in the appropriate place. The, a couple of homeowners from the subdivision to the south wanted to make sure that the city is being mindful that there are homes there. Although we do not have plans for the park at this time, we will certainly be mindful of, you know, parking lot location, lighting, any kind of noise that may be associated with our plans in the future, and keep that to the north and be mindful of those residents. So, those were some of the public comments that were received at Planning Commission, but ultimately, the Planning Commission did make a unanimous favorable recommendation to the city council. Tonight, we would ask that the council hold second reading on this item and to allow staff to continue to work on the park impact fee agreement, which is associated with the rezone. So, we would like to come back in November for final approval of the rezone and present the park impact fee agreement. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on this rezone, but I'll turn it over to Steve Harden to help highlight any other items. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the city council. For the record, my name is Steve Harden. I'm a partner in law from the Fagery Baker Daniels, pleased to be representing Mann Properties before you this evening, and Tim Stevens is here as well for Mann. Kevin did a great job of really giving you the background. I believe the PUD ordinance is in great shape. I think it's, we've worked everything out. I think the only reason we're not asking for second and third reading combined tonight is because of the park impact fee, there's a few details between the property owners and the city to finalize up, and we're confident that's going to get worked out. So, we will be back here in November asking for approval for both the PUD ordinance and the park impact fee agreement, but we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have tonight.
Brett?
Did you check those two lots out?
Yes, sir.
I love the front elevation, and I think the architecture, and they look very stately and very, very nice. The only thing I would ask is if we could get the rear elevation plans, just to look at it, because as we talked about it before in other developments, you know, what the houses look from the back when you're walking on those trails. We want the back to look just as nice as the front, and I know that they made some commitments on there, but to actually see some renderings, I think, would be just helpful. Thanks.
Any other comments?
I have just a couple of comments. First of all, I'm generally supportive of the concept. I really like having the park, and then these homes look really great. One thing, I talked to Deputy Mayor Graff before the council meeting, was Florida Road and what's going to happen there, maybe for some informational, because I went out and I looked through, I actually drove out there last night. You drive Florida Road. It's a, you know, you come up, it's kind of, we've got a road improvement coming with a roundabout that'll help connect 113th and Florida Road, but you go north, you're going to, you turn to the left, you've got a cemetery, you turn to the right, you head north, and you turn right again, then you turn left. I see that road becoming very, very populated, not only you've got construction now, but also, once those homes are built, you have a lot of school buses, because on the north, you've got Southeastern Parkway and, is it Welchel Springs, I believe?
Yes.
Yeah, right there as well. So, again, I think one thing we've got to keep mindful of is how do we deal with Florida Road, because it's going to be, it's going to be used a lot once we get both these projects on moving.
Yeah, I think my only comment to that is engineering and I and others have looked at that, and we certainly know that that's a road that will need to be expanded in the future. We're a little reticent to go improve it today, because with the construction traffic that we're going to get, we saw this with Britton Falls when we built that. I mean, the road just gets decimated by the amount of construction, and Welchel Springs is a very large subdivision, this one going, and then I assume there'll be other developments along that corridor. I think right now, we're going to maintain it to the best of our ability and then financially plan to completely upgrade that road in the not-too-distant future, but I would hate to go do it today and then
Why fix it twice.
Just watch it get obliterated by construction traffic.
Isn't it still county?
Yes. Parts of it, yeah.
Yeah, right. The middle portion of that, where we're talking about from where Welchel Springs ends and where this project would then end as well, that middle is county road, so that's another issue to deal with.
Exactly. There you go. Yep. Four or five years later.
I'll go ahead and have the second reading.
They've had second reading. The only thing I'll ask is, I already know the answer, but I'll just ask so that we get in the habit of asking this, and you'll know what I mean in a minute, but sometimes